Now, I'm on, I'll mute it. Hold on. We are good.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome for, um, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is October 21st. This is our regular meeting. My name is Joan Bealina. I'm the chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that you know this meeting may be attended by person or via a phone video or telephone, or telephone conference. Zoom conference access information was provided for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate. Noted on the agenda posted on the town website. For those attending, I would ask you to mute yourself if you are able to do so, so that we will not get any background noise. I have two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must say your name and title on the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over one another, so that everyone who is listening can hear what's being said, and we have a clear record of it. For this reason, as necessary, when it comes time for the commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before any action is taken, and then to vote on the agenda item, our planner, Lori Josie, will call the role as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on the town's website. I'm now going to ask Lori to take attendance by calling the roll.
I believe John Michael O'Brien's excused.
Yes.
Okay, Sandra Popola was just added to the commission, and I believe she's also excused. Diane Joycey.
Here.
Timothy Zigba.
Here.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Steve Woman.
Here.
Alternate Peter Zerbozo.
Here.
Alternate Andrew Lang Nanny.
Present.
Alternate Steve Biella Jr.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Chairman Joan Beal.
Here. Okay, so for John Michael O'Brien, can I ask Steve Biella, please, to be seated? And for Sandra Popola, remember, I will ask Andrew Leggani to be seated for the meeting. And thank you. Okay, let's move on. First off, we have the review of the minutes, which is for October 7th, 2021, because everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any corrections or amendments to those minutes?
Amendment, okay. Uh, page five. Here. The timeframe for replacement of plants. The little second paragraph.
Yeah, the second paragraph.
Okay.
The discussion was that the timeframe be the longest timeframe allowed.
I'm sorry for that. I thought we had made it so that that was clear. Perhaps it was. Oh, because I think it might have just recently changed, so we were afraid to put the, I believe it's down to 12 months. It might still be 18 that we can allow for. And the long possible, we, we, that was in the letter.
So.
Like, that was my intent of the letter.
So that's going to be moved to an 18-month maximum timeframe?
Or the maximum allowed?
Okay, anyone else have any corrections?
Is that accepted, maximum allowed? I couldn't find the.
Anyone else have any corrections? And do we have a motion? Yes, I mean, the motion to approve this, any amendments discussed. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Joycey. Do we have a second?
Second regulation.
All right, thank you for the discussion.
All right.
I propose. Okay, extension due to lack of presence at the time. You are here now. We're very, we appreciate that. Okay, back to the agenda, scheduling public hearings. First item for scheduling is a text amendment for moratorium and canvas use. The suggested date is November 18th, 2021. Motion to schedule for public hearing. All right, thank you, Ms. Joycey. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Uh, Mr. Rogan, okay. Further discussion on that issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Second is a special permit site plan application of a little house living LLC to develop 18 pre-standing single-family dwellings at 1676 Berlin Turnpike, and the suggested date is also November 18th, 2021. Any motions to schedule a public hearing? Okay, thank you, Ms. Joycey. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Commissioner Lang.
Mr. Lang, okay. All right, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let's postpone, move. Onto commission business, receipt of applications in consideration of peer review for the following. One, a zone change application at 550-554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC to change the zone of map 10-2 block 83, lot 13B, 502 Berlin Turnpike, map 10-2, block 83, lot 13, 522 Berlin Turnpike, and map 10-2 block 83, lot 14, 552 Berlin Turnpike from the Berlin Turnpike 1, which is the BTD zone, to the Berlin Turnpike Development, which is the BTD zone.
Number two is a related application. You may be able, you may want to combine to discuss them.
Okay.
Or you may want to sever your decision on that.
No, that's all right. Number two is a special permit site plan application of 550-554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC for the mixed-use development at 502-554 Berlin Turnpike. So do we want to combine these, or you still want to take them separate? I'll make the motion, combine the two items. Okay, Ms. Joycey, does the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Rogan, thank you. Further discussion on that? Rock there, okay. Then all those in favor combining one and two in special business, say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Okay, perfect. All right, so what do we have on this?
Okay, so what this is, is, well, one, we move this from scheduling a public hearing, which you would typically see when you saw a new application, you typically, we don't write it up as receiveded, but we figured that's the best way to show it on the agenda as acknowledgement that it was received and came in. Um, usually they're just automatically received at the next meeting, or at the date of the next meeting, which would be today. It was received on October 7th, for official date of receipt being today. Um, these are, it will be another mixed-use project, another application for the mixed-use project under the BTD zone regulations, and therefore has a similar review as Berlin Turnpike 2008 LLC, which was the Diadio project that we got the peer review for this past year. And we're just, um, the staff discussions feeling that engineering staff and planning staff have limited time, given the applications, the, and the anticipated scope involved for a thorough review, as well as, um, the, in accordance with the provisions in the zoning regulations that allow for technical and legal assistance, um, as authorized in part in section 12C5, which is for special permits and in the other sections that also allow it, where the nature of intensity, this was snippet from it, "Nature and intensity may have significant impact on the site and surrounding areas." And Town Hall, and another provision of that is that Town Hall staff will not be able to complete the review per the statutory timelines. So similar, it also has similar zoning issues with regard to the, um, BTD regulations and interpretation thereof, as you got that advice from Dr. Poland for the last application.
So this is a very similar like.
It's, it's got a, a commercial component. Um, it also, I believe, has a auto-use component and has the existing, and this is the difference to this one, is it also has an existing commercial component that it will be utilizing. Um, ABC Supply is part of a application and the surrounding, a couple of properties surrounding it. So another commercial use ju, in immediately adjacent to south of the Diadio project and north of Woodlawn.
Now, does the applicant understand about?
Um, we did, um, send the agenda to the applicant's attorney, and he and I discussed it last night. Um, it does not appear as though he's joined the meeting, and I didn't notice him in the audience. I don't know if anyone's here with regard to the application in the audience, but yes, the 150% of the estimated costs be submitted, it's paid by the applicant, et cetera. We haven't gotten, I haven't gotten any other, um, feedback that I'm aware of.
Okay, so on this particular, or these two items, seeing that we want to request the peer review, and I believe the process was that we were able to choose who the consultants were?
Um, within reason, we'll have to just make sure that it fits the guidelines for choosing without having to go out. It's not town money, so it's not something that has to go to bed.
Okay, but without the applicant here to confirm, so what would you do with this, this project right now? Just, is it under other business, or, or just leave it there?
Well, if you're looking, it, it would be a matter of directing staff, whether peer review is appropriate, and that you want us to pursue obtaining peer review.
Okay.
And I think at the time that that moved forward, perhaps when we got the quotes or dug deeper, uh, I, maybe they could, um, could comment on that, but I'm not really sure. I think it's the commission's choice to request peer review.
Okay, so with that, I'll turn to the commission itself, to see if we have any questions about this, or to sort of see how you feel about it. I mean, it should be similar to like to what happened with the Diadio project. At that point, you, uh, it was, um, the applicant in the town came to recognize, because he sort of had commented they wanted to use for consulting fees, and because a project of that size would take over, like, all the building department, all engineering department, and their consideration. So, um, once those consultants were agreed on time, then they were hired and contracted, and the applicant is the one who actually paid the fees to happen and work with the town, so that would ease the burden of that, and a lot of standards for the other project as well. But, and that's just basically a refresher of where we are. But perhaps the commission does not favor that, or, I guess I'll do like a straw poll, or anyone have opinions or anything they'd like to share?
I definitely would like to see the same result.
Okay.
It has been reviewed already, and has split, whatever, already about this, so, so, I think the same.
Well, I don't know that we've come to terms with our same consultants.
We, but they could be approached for sure, you know, I mean, it's the question.
Anyone else have any feels about the peer review, whether it's something we should go with, or, oh, I thought you were. Yeah.
To be honest with you.
Well.
Yeah, this, and it's not like we're asking you to do something that nobody else has been asked.
Right.
All right, so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page on this, okay? So, all right, I think you have the consensus.
I think you have to vote, too. I, I think that would be appropriate.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to hire a consultant. I'd recommend that the last project. The, the last project, uh, our recommendation.
Okay, so you're going to go with a specific consultant, or are you open to others as well?
Well, I'd like that, that consultant to be in the process of whose interview.
I just want to make sure.
To be approached.
It's not going to limit us.
No.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Zigba has a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Lang, you have a second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lang. Yes.
Consultants on this. At this time, I think we should just make a motion, in my opinion. We agree with the peer review, but I don't think we should say we want previous people here, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think that's what my concern was with Mr. Zigba's motion, is that I don't want to lock the commission or the applicant into using, I mean, what if the guys all tied up, the rules of war, and can't do it? Then the project's dead. So we don't want to put ourselves in that position, so.
Just put it out to that consultant, you know.
Well, you just, we just want a consultant. We want consultants that we need to keep it. Okay, all right, and then the town's staff will come to terms with it. We're satisfied with that? So, okay, so we have the amendment on the, on the motion, so second amendment, okay, thank you. So further discussion, and all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? So move. Onto new business, site plan application of Kevin Budney, Budney overhaul and repair for the construction of 4,088 square foot additions to an existing manufacturing building at 131 New Park Drive. Okay, do we have any?
I'm just trying to turn the sound off.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
We're on to new business. The overhaul and repair. Do we have anyone here to represent?
Oh, I believe Mr. Bon Giovanni is on the screen. Can I just add something before we start, because it may be a concern of the commission members? Um, in your packet, the comments from the, in the wetlands and water, and the wetlands agent indicated that wetlands review is necessary. He inadvertently put those, transcribed the comments for Mr. Budney's other application, on this application, because they were routed at the same time. Um, the wetlands agent, Jim Horrible, is on vacation, but I did speak to him today, and he confirmed that no wetlands is required for, no wetlands review is required for this application. So therefore, this application can be acted upon tonight if you see fit, um, as opposed to having to wait for wetlands. Um, you would, um, you will be getting a application that is for the adjacent parcel for a new building that will be before wetlands next one. So therefore, you'll be getting that at a subsequent meeting.
No, we'll have, like, say, a few.
So, so that's not an issue. I just want to get out there.
Okay, do we have any more? Oh, we have a substitute.
Bon Giovanni, I believe.
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the commission and staff. For the record, my name is Alan Bon Giovanni. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of Connecticut. My office address is at 170 Payne Road in Newington. This evening, I'm representing Kevin Budney, Budney overhaul repair and repair, uh, and the property owner 131 New Park Drive LLC in the application before you. I apologize, this isn't a very fancy application. Uh, this is an infill to the building. Um, if I can share the screen, I'll bring the drawing up.
I'm going to try. We don't often share with our, oh, there you go. Look at you.
Okay.
Wow.
Without my help.
So if you look at, uh, the plan, and I'll zoom in on the building a little bit. Um, in this area here on the left, that's the original existing building that was built in the 80s. Um, subsequent additions were added to the northwest, uh, the north, and then the most recent one was the northeast. And this section of the building was left out. Actually, this part of the building was approved, I think, in 2010 or 2014 as part of, uh, one of the building expansions. Um, it never came to fruition more from, from a logistical perspective uh, in coordinating the construction, uh, with the ongoing operations. Um, nonetheless, this building is a little bit bigger. It's about 20 foot, uh, uh, longer towards the east. Um, so it comprises 4,088 square feet. The existing facility is 50,300 square feet. Uh, in total, we will be looking at 54,407 square feet. Um, parking requirements are 109 spaces. At the 54,000 square feet, we have 175 spaces already paved and striped on the, on the parking lot. Um, again, it's a very simple application. It was, most of it was approved at a, at a prior meeting, uh, but we're here before you, because it's going to be a little bit larger, uh, as shown on the plan. Besides the actual building being, uh, constructed, there's some minor grading to the east, uh, and then some storm drainage connections. But it's a fairly basic application. Um, again, I apologize, it's not as fancy and as large as some developments you'd like to see, but, uh, all, uh, it's nonetheless necessary for the applicant. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I have one. Um, do we know what this building's, what the existing building looks like, and what the proposal's going to be?
So the existing building from the street, uh, and, uh, from the west, or if you look down from the Berlin Turnpike, uh, the, the south elevation towards the street is brick with a metal, uh, band around the, uh, facier soffit. Um, the same carries through on the west. The, the additions that were built to the, uh, north of the existing building are dark green metal structures. This will only actually have one and a half exposed sides. It will be the same metal panel that the existing, or the northern half of the building is now. It won't be visible really from any location, as, as the property to the east screens it, between the grade change and then the existing vegetation that's there.
And inside this addition, and inside this proposed addition, are you going to have offices, or, I mean?
No, this is going to be manufacturing space. Uh, the vast majority of this building probably, currently probably 85 to 90% is, is manufacturing space or inspection space. Only the front portion of the building, uh, towards New Park Drive is office, and it's a, uh, really the accessory to the manufacturing space in the, on the building.
Are there any windows?
There are no windows. Um, I believe there is one exit door, uh, but no, it's going to be a, a solid wall.
So can I clarify, just to understand, because I'm not sure everyone's gaining the picture, that the, the building overall, um, is, and so the addition is just that gray piece there, as he zooms in and moves it up. So it's 38 feet.
38 feet in this direction.
That is linking together to, there was a hole in the building, for lack of another word, or a horseshoe gap in the building that was there. Um, and the sloping does go up to the adjacent parcel with wooded area, is my recollection. Am I correct?
That is correct, to the east is wooded.
Yeah, so it's really this 38-foot infill in the middle of a long wall of building already. The building itself is, what, 250? If you go from the front to the back of the building, you've probably just over 200, 200 feet long.
Uh, it's about 275 feet long, front to back.
Oh, I must have missed the dimension there. So you can see the, the stretch, um, that, so, I, actually, my comments, if you don't mind, were that it was, um, one to add that you didn't have Conservation Commission comments, which was no comment. Um, it's basically a percentage-wise small infill project within the overall footprint of a large manufacturing building. Um, as he stated, the, they're already have parking well over that, which is required. Um, and then incorporating the comments of the building official, who noted fire code requirements and, and items for permitting, and that the only other concern that we noted from the staff standpoint was that the town engineer did have some, some notations, and that the plans be updated, and the concerns noted by the town engineer be resolved prior to permitting.
And, and, and we've read those comments, and they're really technical in nature, and we have no issue addressing them to the town engineer's satisfaction.
Anyone else? Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rogan? We have a second.
A second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Woman. Further discussion or questions? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Yeah, I'm not having a vote called, Ms. Mary, because we're all here.
When. If, um, a vote is unanimous, it's fine not to, is my understanding. I think on some of the public hearing items, it's good to have that extra layer. Um, however, as long as the votes are unanimous, and you ask if anyone's opposed, we're good. So.
That, that moves. Congratulations. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening. Are we going into the public hearing? The last secretary will read the call, public hearing.
Sure, quick question, though, to staff. Uh, on the public hearing notice in front of me, uh, this is going to be different from the agenda. On the agenda, we have the Fourth Amendment, such as seven, for the attorney reenactment. Um, the notice in front of me that is missing, so I'm, I'm better.
Um, is that the second item that's listed?
Yeah, on our agenda, it is.
Is it B?
And. We only have Mr. Cannon, where A, and B is doing regulations.
Is Colster. Okay, so A is not on that call, because the hearing was actually opened at the last public, at the last meeting. So this is an open public hearing item. It's a continued item. And so therefore, it didn't have to be republished, because it was discussed and open. Well, it wasn't. It actually wasn't. He, we merely opened it, and he asked for it to be continued at the last meeting. So, um, it's not on the call again.
All right.
Um, can I just add something, or maybe after we read the call out?
Sure.
On the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing Notice, the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at its regular meeting on Thursday, October 21st, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in Town Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall, 247 Kevinton Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Each of the parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely by video or telephone, as provided so. Following public hearing will be held, at which time, an opportunity will be given to those who wish to be heard relative to following application. Hey, special permit slash site plan application of Brandon Buchanan, artist in building and remodeling to locate his business activities, office, insurance area at 230 Gemin Road. And B, proposed amendment to the Berlin zoning regulation of Kevin Colster, property development and facilities manager, Enterprise Holdings, met new section A3 that has private transportation or auto rental service. Applications and related materials are available at the planning and zoning department, Berlin Town Hall, 247 Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Uh, dated this sixth day of October, 2021, Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, City planning and zoning.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so first up is the one that you opened already, which is the proposed amendment of section 7F2B of the Berlin zoning regulations concerning greenhouses by attorney Brad and Monshine.
So before we begin this, in the interest of full transparency, I would like the applicant to know that I just recently found out that I live directly across from personal, when I'm doing the greenhouse design. And I know my parents are here to speak to it as property owners. So I am looking to you, your insight, um, staff, as to whether you would like to be seated.
So from the staff standpoint, or the town standpoint, as far as recusal, that is a determination to be made by the, um, by the commission member to, and to weigh the, any impact that the proposal could have on you, or, or, um, that you may, may sway your opinion one way or another, or not. And that's a commission decision itself, a commissioner decision itself. I'm sorry, I can't give you more. I'd love to.
So can I, um, Rogan, your parents on the, the on the.
All right, so, yeah. So move. All right, so welcome, and, um, this is, um, interesting, so we're anxious to, to hear what you folks have for presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. This application is about the future of farming. It's about the future of farming for the town of Berlin. If you look at farming today, farmers.
If you look at farming today, farmers, or structure, the food we eat, not, for the most part, even grow mobile, transported to us from pretty far away. California.
Oh.
If you think about the lettuce that you eat today, ninety percent of that lettuce, ninety-five percent of that lettuce comes from California. When it comes to Cali, when it comes here from California, if you're in California, they select what's gonna get shipped east, what's gonna stay left. The lettuce that shipped east is the best lettuce of the harvest because it has to survive the trip. By the time it gets here, not very good lettuce. The lettuce that stays west, not very good lettuce. So therefore, everyone in the country is not eating very good lettuce. We've changed that. Each to a farm who's proposing to make this development has already a greenhouse in Guilford, where they're growing lettuce. That facility they've outgrown and they're looking for a bigger facility to, to build. When we think about this type of a facility, you have to realize that they need land, a lot of land. You can't build up a greenhouse. Greenhouses need, need just what you call it, they need sunlight, and they need room in order to grow crops, just like you would on a farm. The difference is that when you're building a greenhouse like this, you grow all year round, it uses ninety percent less water. More, more than ninety percent less water to grow the same crops that you would grow in the ground. So, what the crops are grown in, they're actually grown in like a bath of water. And I think we have given you, it was, we're getting a power blank slide.
I had it and then my computer turned off earlier today, so I lost the things I saved. So, I think I'm gonna go back and get it out.
So, while you're, while you're getting that, I'll fill in. I'll, 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 I'll. What's interesting about these greenhouses as well is because these greenhouses are built for lettuce and other leaf greens. Even, you can even grow cucumbers in them. They're not built for things like tomatoes, because tomatoes have to grow hotter than lettuce does. Lettuce grown have a lower temperature. So, you don't have a lot of the issues that you have with greenhouses that require a lot of heat. Things like having to light it all night. Lettuce doesn't do that. You can actually grow lettuce almost all year round with very limited, um, need for additional heat into the greenhouse, except for.
I do, but it's not sharing because I think I need to download it to share it. Shouldn't you just download it to share it? If I share my screen, it's not here to choose. But I don't think. Peter, you're not seeing it, are you? If you don't mind me asking? Let me, I got it back on my screen, hold on.
Can you tap on the second, oh, the second slide? Yeah, for coming out. Yeah, that's how you would do it.
Yeah, Peter, are you seeing that screen?
No, I'm not.
No, you're seeing the, the audience, so. Yeah, it's not being shared. The share is not appearing as one of the options for me to share.
Peter, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to get in the car.
See. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of this idiosyncrasy. These things happen.
Well, that, that's about the level of my.
At each week, there's, there's some new quirk.
Something new.
While she's playing with the computer, could I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I wanna go back.
Absolutely.
Um, and this is just, as I come to a farmer's family as well. Um, so I just wanna know, I mean, you're talking about sunlight and room to grow things. You're talking about water.
Yeah.
You're saying, you're planning that for these greenhouses, you'll be using ninety percent less water?
Right, and in fact, we have the, my, 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 is here, these are our managers.
Yeah.
He can act, he knows the technical stuff better than I do.
But where's your water source? Because I know we're on, you're on, what, where you're proposing is on a huge aquifer. But I have concerns that also feeds a lot of wells.
Well.
And the wells, so.
On a daily basis, or on a year basis, it may be a million dollars a year, which is not much. Just to make it, the, we, we're working on, on the tubs, pretty much. The same water that's in the tub, they stay there all the time. They're all going through filtration. Or the nutrition goes through there. We don't, we don't drain it. We, we use the same water. It's, it's water with a lot of, uh, it's very good water for the whole floor.
So, it would be like, like having a swimming pool, you have a filter, a swimming pool. You're using the same water.
So, the only things that we need to add on, there is a whole system controlled by a computer that scanned each unit that work with. And if the water level is low, we just add on like thirty seconds every six hours. And the only, the consumption is pretty much from the plants who consume water. More for evaporation when it's hot, and it's, and it's hot. That's the only time we add more water to it. So, it's very little add-on. It's the initial time to fill up the tub, and that's all. It's, uh, it's nice. We don't need more. We don't need a lot of water. We haven't, I mean, we could, if we cannot share it, it's.
I mean, I think it's to take you off the subject. I know that you're going to a presentation, but I took advantage of the fact that.
Well, I think when you see, when you see the presentation, you will see how it looks like.
Yeah. On the lower slides.
If we can get the slide up.
He's telling me it's uploading.
Okay.
One question I would have is that, uh, if you decide this is for lettuce, but the text amendment is not only for lettuce.
It's, it's green leaf and we can do herbs as well, so.
Right, well, you're right. They, they, they text amendments for any greenhouse.
Yeah.
What we end up proposing is for lettuce. For greenhouses that would have tomatoes or other vegetables in the greenhouse, you would see the site plan would be different than the site plan will eventually propose to you. So, for example, it would require more apparatus for heating. It would require more issues with light lighting, things like that. So, it would end up, you, you can, you can care for that in your site plan and in your site plan reviews, what, what the greenhouse is actually utilized for. And, and as opposed to type of, I think it would be hard in a text amendment to say you can only have a greenhouse for this use. I think you end up, you end up at the site plan stage saying, what are you gonna do with it? What's the lighting gonna look like? What kind of screening do you need for neighbors and things like that?
I understand where you're coming from, but once we open that door, we're making it available to us. Well. No, you can't move continually down the water. Or, or even more.
Yeah, nothing, yeah, I understand what you're saying. So, when you're writing, when you're looking at the text amendment, we don't, we don't even, we try not to think about site specifically, but we try to think of what's the overall impact. And then to the next people down the line that may come in with an idea.
Yeah. I think if it's served, it's water consumption. It's, it's, you know, reusing right now, different drainage, and well water. It's not an impact on anybody, you know, nothing at all. We, we hardly use water because it is a very small amount of water that we use our, you know, baby dishes. That's, that's the beauty of it. We're using the same water all the time, just adding thirty seconds of the trick water. It's nothing. Even in your backyard, you can, you can use more than that.
Question, okay.
I am so sorry, this is not, we haven't had this problem.
Yeah, that's okay.
Um, Peter's asking to speak, I think. Oh, no, okay. I thought I saw his hand, I'm sorry.
Well, one of the things that, that we do know about this property area is that it's known as POD. And nothing's, nothing has been built in that zone. Has been allowed to be POD. Uh, when you review the, the requirements for a POD zone, a property like we're, like we've been proposing to go on this site in this plan, you would not build anything because of the setbacks and the other requirements in the zone are so restrictive that you would never be able to build anything of any substance. He has written to that. Uh, if you think about it today, the property that we would be going on, for example, it's a little over three hundred feet wide. The setbacks are a hundred and fifty feet of society. So, you have no rooms to go in. Um, you do allow there to be height, or you're allowed to build, I think, five stories. Um, this would be a one-story building. It's, greenhouses have to be one-story. Uh, it would be difficult to do more than one with glass. But it would be, it's, um, so again, so that's why you need this, this change in the text because in order to put something like this on the property, you need to have the room to do it. And you need to be able to do it this way.
I think Diane got a, I do have a question.
Sure.
It is a, I think, I might.
Might have to press the button. Press it because that's what town council prefers, is holding it down when they talk, I believe.
I keep pushing it and pushing it. It's working now. On, off, so I, I thought it was on. Sorry. So, uh, the discussion on height is really where I wanna go with my questions. Um, if you would explain, please, the need for a forty-foot structure. Um, and I assume it has to do with production that's going to increase your production area. What is the need for forty feet?
Well, the need is for ventilation and heating purposes so you can really put shooters and carry everything probably below enough so you can, it's very close to the person.
At your Guilford location?
Yeah, but it's a pit and you try to put a different frame, this structure. Open angles up and down, and you need your purposes. So, I would say the max would be forty, most likely to be four. That's the purpose. I mean, someone should be able to see the fishing because you can see that.
Look at that, I'm on a second, I hope.
So, there's, um, there's no other growing media used? It's just water that you're adding, um?
It's, we don't use soil. It's all sitting on the tubs, almost like channels. Some channels, if you have, there is, hydroponic is very broad, starting from the trick. It's sort of like water consumption, but there's a lot of, uh, a lot of ways to grow hydroponic. The way we use is in tubs. So, the tubs are, the plants are sitting in a, in a jar, in tubs, on floors. And they're just, you know, they're trying to get a stress pretty much. All the nutrition comes there through the water, so there's no soil involved. The only soil that involves is on the plugs in the nursery stage, but we do everything ourselves as well. So, within this square footage, we're gonna have nursery, big old nursery. But we sit in, sitting, and then we walk it up into the tubs. And they don't see any more devastation. It's the only kind of, I see any soil at all. But they're on, they're just floating in water.
So, what, what becomes of that? Do you end up at some point with some sort of a sludge? Um, when you're, when you're planting, transplanting from your clothes that have the soil media into your.
It's designed, it's all, it's all, you have to use a very good quality of soil so it will dissolve and, and be part of the nutrition as well. So, we're using a very fine soil that will dissolve in and has some kind of nutrition factor as well. We bring them especially from, uh, Canada. I wish they had a safe, uh, and, uh, pretty much there. Uh, we use a specific area for the seeding, the trans, the transfer from this nursery stage into the seeding, uh, to the tubs. The specific area where we, we condense them to, I think they're really, uh, when you get a real true roots that you can move them on to the final distillation, we call it, where they grow to the full stage. So, there's a few stages in the growth.
Sure.
So, nursery, transition, we call it, and then final stage. And the whole thing takes from seed to full grown and in sixty-seven weeks.
So, you mentioned that there's other types of hydroponic growing. Um, is that something that you'll discuss as part of your presentation or is that something?
No, it's, that's not a technique we use. Hydroponic, it's, it's a not, regular drip, water drip that you, you know, nozzles that drip water into plants in soil, no outdoor.
I'm curious though about the other, the other methods.
Yes.
Because this application affects the entire zone, so we have to consider all options.
Sure.
So, so I'm just curious what the other types are.
Currently, what we're using and what we're gonna use is, we have two, it's called NFT, which is channels that water flow and, and it's closed circuit that, that they're going to a tank and coming back, and the tubs that we use. We use both techniques. Uh, and the second one is the tubs that the water just circulate within. They don't go anywhere. So, these are the two, the two that we use as far as I can find.
It's just, do they, they all have copies, right?
No, we did not. However, I did, so, the only remote participant we have right now is Commissioner Zarabosa. Um, I did, if he would confirm whether he got it or not, I did just email him the PowerPoint that you sent to me. Um, so, if, and then we have an audience of people here that are public to watch and I can bring it up here, um, if that's acceptable to him as well as the commission. There's, it would not appear to have any issues with it being presented to anyone else listening because no one else is participating right now. And, um, as long as he gets it, I can send it to his other email if he needs me to. Um, if he didn't get it, I am not sure. And so I can share that. I also have, um, the bulk table for the POD zone with annotations for the changes to the bulk table that I wanted to hand out to the commission tonight. Um, and Attorney Monshine is, was familiar with this. I gave it to him probably.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, Veronica? I was just gonna bring it up on the screen if you can find it.
We'll give a minute to pass this.
Only because you guys are asking questions about bulk, so I thought it would help you to have the numbers.
Also, just to answer your question, I was asking, hi, I'm all. All hydroponic, in the end, uses less water than growing in soil and regular. So, no matter which technique you're using, you're always gonna use less water in the hydroponic. You could control it pretty much. So, you would consider your greenhouse to be eco-friendly? Oh, yes, absolutely. That's what it's about.
So, um, the next questions that I have, we have to do more with the volume of production. And how your product is going to be sold? Is this going to be something where? Um, is this going to be something where people would come to the site? You're gonna have trucks in and out? Give us an idea of the scale.
So I can tell you where we are right now. And we're moving, so it's gonna be, uh, we're, right now, uh, in Guilford, we have two-acre greenhouse, which we, we don't utilize all of it, because some of it's nursery, you know, it's part of the production of. Uh, and we are doing over there somewhere about thirty thousand heads per, a week. Okay. Uh, we don't sell direct to the public. Uh, we only, also, um, we, we only have one delivery truck and try not to use it as well, because we don't like transportation. Uh, we working with the major chains, uh, such as Big One, Stop and Shop, Shop Right, Whole Foods, some other distribution, uh, Church Point. So that's pretty much the customer we have. We have plans for the new, uh, the new facility, uh, in work already, uh, that, uh, it's a another distributor, a different angle of production, that they process our products somewhere else. They get that from us and they take it elsewhere. Specifically, it's the main nest, the main head that we, we use to protect. And, um, so it's not like we have maybe, right now, we have one truck three times a week, one truckload, I mean, trailer. All the rest is small little, uh, refrigerated straight truck. Uh, so the production that we have, it's, it's not gonna be like, uh, trailer waiting in line and blocking the road or anything like that, it's, the maximum we can produce is maybe a one truck a day, per day. That's all we can do. It's the, the size that we need, we need to fill up production per week, like every week is cycle, which is a month. So if we have harvest, that's the way it works, so. And you ask about the size of it. Just to give you an idea, what you grow in one acre indoor hydroponic, you're gonna need forty acres outdoor to give you, yeah, the same here.
So, um, a two-acre greenhouse is thirty thousand heads of lettuce daily?
No.
I have a question, only because you said the Guilford structure is only two acres, but it's twenty-six feet tall. But this would be, what, ten acres or whatever?
So each, each one would be five acres.
Five acres, but, but here you're saying you need up to forty feet.
No, no, the max, right now we're sitting at twenty-seven. The heat, it's nothing to do with the growing. The growing is all one level.
Yeah.
It's not, but the, the way designed for ventilation point, when you have suction, when you, in the, in the summer, when you need to cool it off, uh, we don't put air conditioning, we can't survive. Exactly, so you need to open the window and close them, it's all automated, uh, with sensors, whether the heat rise or the UV rise, curtain close, curtain open, it's all automated. But, uh, you need for circulation inside for the air, and you can't have it too low. You need to have it high enough, not that high, forty foot, it's really high, right now we're using twenty-six, that's the existing location.
So, yeah, also, um, the existing location are exist, were existing greenhouses that they moved into, um, that were built in the nineteen twenties.
Twenty-nine.
Um, they're actually the oldest green, existing greenhouses in the state of Connecticut.
It's the Pinchback Farms.
Yeah, it's Pinchback Farms in Guilford.
Yeah.
They used to grow roses. Beautiful.
I, I guess my concern is that, I, I know that South Kensington area where you're proposing a change, and it's, uh, it's very open, and it's great for the purpose, but my concern is the size of the structures and what that will do.
So I guess we're, you know, when we're proposing forty feet, it's because we haven't, we haven't engineered the building yet. And the new, the building will be, it's a new build, it's gonna be a new building. So in addition, actually, to the ventilation that you need in the summer, you also need to put blankets in the winter as well to insulate, to keep it warm. So you do both, so you have to make sure you have enough height. Um, that whether it's, whether they end up designing it at twenty-seven feet, or whether they design it at thirty feet or thirty-five feet, I did, we just don't know right now. So that was the purpose of having the forty feet, is to give them enough room to, to do that, because it still has to be a one-story building, you can't, we're not proposing that, because that we, that we'd make it a two-story building.
I think for me, when we start talking about a story versus forty feet, when I think of a story, I think of roughly ten foot in front of it. So, um, I, when you start talking about a one-story greenhouse that could be as tall as forty feet, to me, that's a four-story structure. I understand it's not separated.
I mean, if, if we wanted to, if we wanted to amend the, the amendments to be, you know, thirty feet.
That's, that's enough, we don't need more than that.
You don't think that, no. Yeah, we could make it thirty feet, but that would be, that would probably be the minimum. This is, like I said, this is at twenty-seven.
There is, let me just, there's like layers, uh, to help us in the winter and the summer. So the layers is the growing, which is not more than three, four, or five feet.
Go back to the blankets in the winter, I'm really wondering how you snuggle up.
It's thermic, it's thermic curtain. It's thermic curtain, that give you kind of like what it does in the summer, it's when there is too much UV, it closes up, so it won't burn the leaves, right? In the su, in the winter, we, we are, we're working with heat, with heaters. So in order to keep the heat and consume it, we put in the curtain again, it's, it's open and closing by itself. It's almost like a blinder, just blinds over here. But just put it hard, and it's not, it's not, it's sitting, it's sitting like midway on the top. It has to be above the heaters. So when we want to.
Like a retrap.
Like a pool cover.
Yeah, in a way, yeah.
Yeah.
We can see it here, but, but the layer is pretty much to hold the heat in the, in the winter. So we're not gonna run too much, you know, natural gas, whatever we're gonna use over there.
I call it a blanket. They, they have a, it's, it's free.
Yes, I have a question. Uh, it says here that the building covers seventy percent of the property. Imperious, various surface, total eighty percent building and permanent surface. Okay. That's a lot of coverage, and I, I don't understand. Uh, that, that amount of coverage, I, I don't understand. And you also said in here that the other twenty feet or twenty percent, uh, can have driving and other movement. So you're covering the whole property. That, that's a concern of mine. And also, um, you said the property that you, you, I know it's not property specific right now, it's three hundred feet wide. Uh, and, uh, maximum width of the property in the POD, uh, zone is five hundred feet. So I'm trying to figure out that. You know, and you're not changing that five hundred feet, feet in that, uh, uh, zone either, so you only got three hundred feet, it's not gonna fit. So I like those couple things to be addressed. So you also, I noticed on the agricultural section, eleven C ones agriculture, uh, you're down from our eleven, our fifteen, our twenty-one, our forty-three, our six, MR one, MR two, and field these zones. I don't see this stuff going, this going into our eleven, our fifteen zone. I don't see it going in our twenty-one. I don't see it in our four-three. Uh, so, so, and that's a, another question.
Okay, can I respond just to that last one? Because I think that's a matter of, I probably caused that confusion myself. Um, so section eleven C one is the section of the regulations that addresses agriculture in general. So that's the agriculture itself, which is allowed, the farm, the nursery, the greenhouse, old storage plant, et cetera. The, the words in the, um, document you have are all there. Um, except for after MR two zones, it says it is also permitted as a special permit use in the POD zone upon approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And my suggested text amendment was to, to be consistent with the POD regulations, which are in the industrial regulations that say agriculture is permitted by right, to say in the POD zone that it, agriculture is, is permitted. The greenhouses itself would be permitted in the, the commercial greenhouses that his language is proposing, would be only in the POD zone by special permit use. I mean, yeah, by site plan, I'm sorry, by site plan approval. It has nothing to do with the residential zones, it was just the language says in POD, you're allowed agriculture by right. In the agriculture regulations, it says agriculture is a special permit use. So we had to, one, fix that inconsistency, and then move over to the commercial greenhouse, which is one of the listed uses under site plans for, um, uh, commercial greenhouses that fit these criteria, over five thousand square feet. The greenhouses under five thousand square feet still follow the regulations under the agricultural regulations in eleven C. That would otherwise be permitted in the zone for any other agricultural use that's allowed.
And, uh, to, to respond to your five hundred feet, so the, the property's sort of, sort of hell-shaped, so the, the one part is three hundred, the rest, there is a part that's.
But if you're, if you're covering eighty percent of the property, part of the, the property was three hundred foot wide. I also see here a minimum lot size, ten, ten acres. Uh, you're proposing five. If there's a piece of five.
Well, the, the lot itself is, is twenty.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
No, he just died. Are we back, Peter? Can I just ask, did you get the email PowerPoint? Or no?
No, I didn't.
I'm gonna try one more time to send it to you.
I think everything we started on has already been, uh, has already been.
Was already on there?
Yeah, everything that's on our, on our greenhouse, you know, people have asked about it, we just spoke.
I can.
Raise that, or, you know, I'm good, I'm just thinking, I get to start, but you guys don't know the target.
This particular one, those are the extreme channels that are almost done. And we have a little, little machine that rolls it out, so it just doesn't interest.
Wow.
Yes, and on the tubs, that's the pattern of the company, uh, the holes are, imagine like a tub.
You got it, Mark.
And if you pick up a button and switch, the whole thing rolls in. So you're standing in one area, you're away from each other, and the floor comes to you in August and goes. Just everything rolls into the same place.
You don't get your stuff, do you?
And now I believe I'm sharing.
No.
So maybe my computer just needed to restart in order to share.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's where we've already covered.
Let's see the movie now.
I have one question.
Yes.
Um, putting, making sure I see that there is no supplemental waiting. Totally, uh, not the like, correct, that is something that will be continued.
What do you do on Friday days, like during the winters? What is? It must still suck up.
In the summertime, we do only, you know, we harvest between six to seven weeks. Okay. It's about ten days a year. So, and specifically, just starting this time of year, that we already started more production and have like a thing of plants and everything, because we know that the production is gonna get more.
And, and do you rent some spots out, John, so some of us need that, need to, or whatever?
I can tell you that anyone who comes in the window and it's all white inside, they're going to see green, and the guys that's working, working in t-shirts, they're like, wow.
If you have a pitch.
Okay, so let me see where we are.
All right, yeah. Yeah, let me see where we are.
So there's a little bit about the company.
Okay.
So the, the company is a company called H2O Farms, like I said, they are located currently in Guilford. They're a, a joint venture between two companies, a company called CTS, I was actually looking at Israel, the company hydroponics, which is located in the UK. Uh, uh, so they, it's a, it's a European technology. I've already talked a little bit about why hydroponics, um, and the technology, again, it saves seventy-five to ninety percent of water, uh, compared to traditional agriculture. And of course, as you said, also, one acre of, of hydroponic is about forty acres of land for, for farming. Um, and hydroponics also is very controlled, so it's just the plants, the exact nutrients they need. Um, and, uh, and the product at the end is a forested area product, it's what you can get, uh, from growing, uh, in the land. You also can control insects and other things, but not easier. So each two R O Farms technology, that, you know, from the technical. So if you're familiar with the technical, the technical, basically, I might be a grown man. And all of the, um, it's, 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 all of the technology that I just talked about, that all is controlled by the fields. Uh, so very little, uh, human interaction in the actual technology itself. Um, of course, there's a lot of technology and human interaction, planting and growing, uh, of, of the lettuce. I'm also saying growing time is about seventy. Uh, if you think about it, it takes three to four months for lettuce to grow. Also, so right now, we focus on three different vegetables, butterhead lettuce, romaine, and red and green colored lettuce. That would continue, uh, so a lot. I've already talked about the whole year, we're growing about thirty thousand, I believe. Because of that, it allows them to do a fixed price year-round, so as you may know, uh, that whole price is really, of the week. That's the year, so, and the interest makes sense in the summer. Um, this pizza, it's different all year round. Uh, and of course, it's locally grown, so all of the lettuce is stamped Connecticut grown. Uh, and it's grown and grown. Uh, and it's grown in Rome. Um, and the vegetables, of course, because they're fresher, they have a want to sell. Like they're not, they're not, they're not going to have to go through that whole shit. Currently, uh, they are, they're selling the whole food stop and shop, Big Y, ShopRite, and then other local.
I like wanting, but the link that you see over there, which was one of the first segment that we had in channel eight and six that came over. That was when we had the drought in Connecticut about two, four years ago. And they come and they were talking about water consumption. The mentor there.
How long is that?
Uh, two minutes.
Okay. You guys are interested?
Mike, can you try to do that? I make no promises.
Well, my five word read, let's, that each two quantity difference is the future of food farming. There is one, that would mean four years, and it's set up for seven lines. But I think this is, this is probably a lot, I think, is required. But as thirty thousand heads, I would, I already saw the unanimous partners working the supply. Big Y will just start the whole food, the farmers is just part of hundred parts, first in the country. Growing several types of plants that last two weeks, romaine, and red, one. What you can grow in seven to eight weeks on seeds for a full grown head in their natural, naturally grown. It would be, it comes in your full grown head, but four weeks. It's also a lot of, as you would wear. So the rabbits, the insects, the water, and for that, on the tractor, uh, we can go into the carpet. So we're using a mature player to control the environment. And then we run out of the net. Right on the left, they're recycling entirely, ordinarily, the system, and next year, and then it's like this law. Based on Israel, the product, it's going to be set to move into Canada. Taking the harvest last three hundred sixty-five days a year is in touch. Based more on what's ready to expansion. We're also, a business setting down the duty of different time, and that's, one use, all the same. It's not the time, you say.
Actually.
Okay, now I'm gonna exit of this and hope that.
It's, it's under the threshold, so don't worry about it.
Did you get it back, Peter?
I'm sure you're probably seeing. So this is our, we don't sell ads because the competition is there. So all we do is just leave it's like a leg. Very much back.
You, um.
We don't need to wash them, you don't need to do anything.
But I mean, when you harvest them, you save the root system and you put it back in the water hole, regenerate.
This is the only item that we don't use, uh, and take off the, the romaine side. The rest of the product that we have, that the rest, they kind of use. Some people live with the water and, you know, they can fly with it. But it comes, it comes with a, the little dirt. This is the only dirt that comes from the, the nursery stage. I'm not gonna put you now, but it's like. And we will have, this is something that you haven't seen, the red leaf, the green leaf, normally the red leaf. Uh, romaine with the little stains. This is what I call, uh, Sonoma, it's a, it's a specific, very flowery. And, and so is the green leaf, very crunchy. So we can read them.
We're gonna bring that address.
No, no.
That's, that's, that's our presentation.
It really is incredible, like, you know, it takes five to, because you live so much all the time development, and you really don't want the farmers to go away. You actually, you really just need them. So. But again, you know, my concern is, you know, I know the building's gonna look like, my concern is that height, where it sounds like you're going, the fabric lines.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like you've got that.
Yeah, um, I know this is part of the public hearing too, so if there's any questions. Yeah.
Well, this is something that, I don't wanna talk about it, but we are going to be critically using, as we said, there, you work it by there, uh, you're doing standards. But it's a lot harder than, you know, what the F U or U A or W do. Uh, so we do use a conventional regular fertilizer. It's a mix, it's almost like where, it's a product formula that we give our employees. But, um, I don't wanna, don't hold me on it. We are coming out with, in the same specific location, we have a senior drawing, but the head house will have a location where it's going, going to be, it's already completed, there are already, it's supported by the European Union and under guidance, what we have, uh.
First, it's like a baby, so.
Well, yeah, so it's going to be, uh, we're gonna create organic nutrition fertilizer made from ammonia reaction of the sun. So that will pretty much for chemicals for, for many of those. I don't wanna say anything, it's in the works. Like that's, that's what we aiming, it's, uh, there's a lot of cycling going on in the company. Uh, it's patented already, improved in Europe, we wanna bring it and do the R and D with everybody else. So hopefully it's gonna happen, but.
The findings of ammonia were that.
No, 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 it's, it's a reaction, it's almost like the bottles.
So we have to remember that, that the part of the nutrition is nitrogen. So the, the use of one of the technologies. On that, so it's not, it's not, use of one. It's, it's a, it's a reaction, the reaction. But it's not, it's using. But the, um, that's the problem you have today with hydroponics is that, is there no organic fertilizer, decent organic fertilizer that's soluble in water? So that's one of the problems with hydroponics, that's why hydroponic, for the most part, is not again. And or it's naked organic, you'd have to have this break together. So there is, but there is, you know, there's.
Well, if we do those, well, with, they are organic, they're not, um, I'll obstacle with that, we don't wanna use chemicals on plants. We want to protect the healthy food. If you control it, like in the environment, if you control the environment, like the greenhouse, you have the ability to identify scouting right away if something goes wrong, if you have anything. When you consider it an early stage with organic, that, the only obstacle with organic and organic is you have waiting period for harvests. It has to go away. And with organic, there's no downtime. So if you scout it well, and you find it well, and you find it well, whatever, sometime, you know, it's biology after all. But if you can treat it, and control it in the beginning, you don't get into anything that's just a little screen. And I can tell you for the last, I would say, year and a half, it's not even organic. And normally I do it in the winter, in the summertime, where you can get all kind of fungus from, from the heat and roots disease. You know, we know, you know, it's been going on, so we know how to act and how to treat it. Uh, we do, as I said, we work like you have in standards. Uh, we do, uh, water testing, double the amount of, you know, what the, the FDA require, because this is how we work. And we, you know, we gap certify, we big gap certify on the gap though. Always score a hundred percent. I know if anybody is, you know, familiar with the Department of Agriculture, but, uh, they're trying to implement, uh, Connecticut gas. And we're pretty much using our property from our gap. So gap, 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 you have to do that, so my question is, you have to have certification in order to, uh, to sell your product in the future.
Well, I'm trying to solve that, because we are in public here.
Okay, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am, I just ask you.
Thank you for letting us do that.
You're welcome. Thank you, I'm not bearing any gifts.
Oh, that's fine, right.
I've known, I would have brought the dress things. My name is Grace Rogan. Um, good evening. Um, I, I own the property at twenty-one zero four, to Glen Highway, which is directly across the street from the proposed, um, project. Um, I thank you for your time, I appreciate the opportunity to share my concerns. What I'm gonna try to do, and I, I think that the advent of hydroponics is, is terrific, it really is. But we're sitting here and not only looking to this piece of land, we're looking at a total redo of, of regulations that we're living by, right? So this is nineteen acres and there's twenty-five more that are down the street where we are. So what I wanted to do was, um, we spent a lot of time and I don't wanna repeat a lot of the stuff that has been addressed already, you've done a good job at questioning the the aquifer, the water tables, the light, um, the pesticides. Um, so I appreciate the, the questions you have. Um, so I just wanted to just spend a couple of minutes, maybe expanding on some of the issues that we have, as being a residential and a farm, we're a farm ourselves, so I truly appreciate where, um, H two O farms are coming from. Um, we deal with some of the same, those issues every day. Um, I wanted to speak directly to maybe three or four items that was mentioned during the presentation. I thought it was, um, well done, firstly. In spite of technical difficulties, I don't have a PowerPoint.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I wanted, I wanted to discuss the light, which has been addressed, but just wanna point out a couple of things about that. I wanted to talk about water again, just a couple of things on that. Um, we talked a little bit about pesticides, those kinds of items, and I'm gonna talk about contamination. Um, we're talking about facilities, including the height of the, um, about the greenhouses. These are massive greenhouses. Um, it's not like the greenhouse that we see along, a couple of greenhouses that we see along the Timberland Highway, these are massive. These are the size of a, of, this is forty feet. I, I, being not really clear on how high forty feet was, um, my farm has a, a barn on it. My barn is twenty-six feet high, I have a silo. It's about thirty-five feet, just to give you a perspective of how high forty feet is, or even how high thirty feet is. A barn is about thirty feet. So you're looking at greenhouses that are the size of my barn across the street. And we're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand square feet worth of greenhouses. Um, so that's, that's a big chunk of property, in my opinion. Um, so I, let's talk about light, I know that, uh, a pro, a commissioner Rogan talked about the, um, light being from the sun only. But you need, there's gotta be some kind, why then ask that part of the, why I meant it? Why mention it in the, the proposed amendment? One of the, one of the things that they talked about in the lights is that the outdoor lighting should be directed or shielded so that the light source is not readily visible or no glare. So if it's not needed, why put it in there? They get out, if there's no need to worry about lighting impacting the residential area, people getting it in their bedroom windows. Um, they get out. I'm always interested, I always wonder what people mean specifically by light source being that extrusive to, to its neighbors, is it? What's out here, what does that mean? So I, I wanted some clarification on that. Um, so that's pretty much what I had to say about light, water. The current regulations require that any, I'm gonna try to find the wording that you have in your regulations. All PODs shall be adequately serviced by public water and public sanitary facility, facilities. And also there, you're asking for public sewers, but we don't have that in South, Southern, South Kensington. Everything is well, and everything is septic systems. I don't, I don't think that's been addressed here tonight. Um, I know a million gallons sounds like a little, but that's sort of like a lot to me. Um, it's an aquifer across the street, I'm counting on that water system to run my own farm. I'm counting on that water system for it to bathe in and to drink. So it's, um, I, I would like to know why, if it's not an issue, why? I think it just needs to be focused on from an amendment standpoint. Um, it's a note, I'm gonna put the better. We didn't have much time. Okay. And because there's no public sewers, where, where's the pesticides going? Where are, uh, what happens to the wastewater? What happens, does it get leached into the ground? Um, I just wanna make sure that nutrients, the pesticides, the fungicides, um, how are they containing, are they going into a reservoir? And those are concerns of ours. Um, we've talked about the greenhouses, what about the other facilities? There's the greenhouse, and there must be, where does it get packed? Where's the office? Um, we don't have any, do you have specs on that? I don't know, but I haven't seen any in this amendment, this proposed amendment. Um, and I think the last thing I wanted to talk about is bulk tables. And I think, um, this has been mentioned tonight. But the bulk tables require currently. Oh, yes, thank you. Now, I made notes, but I wanted to make sure I had the right notes. The bulk tables require right now two hundred feet for the minimum flat yard. We're being asked to amend it to seventy feet, so that would be seventy feet for any POV, correct? Am I right about that? Not just this piece of land. So throughout Berlin, this is what you see agreeing to if you make these changes. If you're making these changes, the side yard now is a hundred and fifty feet. You'd be agreeing to forty. The current, uh, bulk table for the rear yard, the side, the, the rear yard is two-hundred feet. You're being asked to approve seventy feet. The max, and this is what was mentioned tonight, the maximum building coverage of seventy percent and the maximum impervious surface coverages of eighty percent. And you're being asked to go to twenty-five percent on the building coverage of seventy percent. And you're being asked to go from eighty to fifty on the impervious surfaces. And these seem to be of grave concern, not just for me, but for the town. Um, somebody must have had something in mind when they put this together, this table. I'm sure that someone sat in the room just like this one and said, okay, this is what we want for the town. Um, and I'd like them to stay the same, just not for us, but for the, for this, for this town. Um, I just wanted to take a couple just to make sure that I'm addressing what I had in mind, my thick notes and. The height really worries me. The water contamination of our well is, is really, although it's gonna go somewhere. I, you know, I don't care if it's just a bucket, it's gotta go somewhere. And we don't have sewers. We don't have public water. But if you would decide to bring public water and sewers my end of the town, then let's do it. Uh, that's a good idea. I would love it. Then I wouldn't have any concerns at all regarding that particular point. Um, I think that that does it. I think I've addressed it. Not, you know, looked at this over very quickly, but, um, I think there's a lot of concerns here. We have to be careful. Um, do I, do I think this is a great idea? Absolutely. I think farming is so important, and I think that, that answers. But what, what, what of the future and what's the town? What, because this is not just our, across the street from me, it's for those twenty-five acres that are down the street from me. And any potential, uh, requests that would come to you for this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, anyone else who wants to address the question? Yes, sir.
Evening. Uh, my name is Keith Foster and I work at a farm between three Chamberlain Highway, and I would be, uh, your next door neighbor, actually. Um, number one, I'd like to, uh, I think it's great to keep agriculture in Connecticut. Uh, you know, it's, it's difficult growing things. Um, but the concern that I have, actually, I'm torn with this project. And the reason I'm torn with this project is, uh, the field next door to me is used pretty extensively by a farmer here in Brooklyn. And it's, it's very good agricultural land. It really is. It's well drained. Um, we're fortunate enough to have an aquifer underneath there, which is why the state of Connecticut put their, uh, fish hatchery uh, just down the road, probably a hundred years ago. And I also know that there are greenhouses down the road from us that, uh, took alley agricultural land away also. And basically, it's kind of set and ready to go. And I realize we have a free enterprise system here, but I'm just, I'm quite a, kinda surprised that, uh, and there may be issues that I don't know about, of course, but maybe that, that could be addressed, be used for this project, because I think it's ready to go. Um, like I said, I'm sure there's issues that they can't, they didn't, they didn't come to terms with. Um, but my, my, my biggest concern is the fact that, uh, land next door to me is very extensively used for, for hay for, it's probably only one or two farms with animals left in the town of Berlin. And this gentleman does use this quite extensively for, for hayland. Um, you know, we have to look back at the history of that particular area. And, uh, if you look at the, the chicken coops on the road, uh, they're pretty high too, you know? And, uh, not that I'm saying yea or nay for any type of particular project, but you have to look at that as well, what was used for that property years ago in that area. And I do realize to view the, uh, area. And I also do realize that some of the regulations for farming is very restrictive to our land. If I were to put up the accessory building for my, strictly for my equipment, it basically would be in the middle of my agricultural land. So I think we do have to look at things that are written down in regulations, uh, along with this project. So, like I say, I'm, 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 I'm in a gray area here and, uh, I'd like to hear some further, uh, input from, from other people and see what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Ed.
Hello, Christopher Edge, Economic Development Director, two forty ten in the road. I've been working with the applicant in the P O D zone for some time now. Excited about the project, bringing together technology and growing, growing with the great history of agriculture that we have. My hope is working with them and seeing as well is to find viable development in P O D. It's been a very challenging thing. I think everyone here on the commission, everyone here has realized that it's very challenging outside of agriculture. Would love to see jobs and investment come, but I also realize that it needs to make sure it does fit. What is gonna work for the town now and going forward, and would love to see a middle ground and balance can be found between. Because I think there is very important on both people, both from the agriculture side, but also from the area. It is a very established area. From my perspective, it's a great opportunity and would love to see it happen. And, but also I know this commission will take a look at it and see what makes sense for everyone. Because it is going to be throughout the entire area. Wouldn't love to see something happen, as I'm sure on this commission would at this point. I did not get an opportunity to present a second on the development commission, which changed a couple of times, so I did not, was not able to get their input. But I did want to come up with, you know, having worked with them, and want to see something happen, but realized to me it's a balance that fits.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Yes, we're going to support.
Um, I really appreciate hearing from property owners around the site that we're looking at. Just to address a couple of points. Uh, as you've heard, the water usage on the property is actually not a lot and should not affect the aquifer. When it comes to the pesticides and fertilizers, um, the fertilizers are actually stored by the plants, so that doesn't get disposed of. And pesticides are, are the use. They are used to get sprayed on the plants. They don't get, when going to the ground, it's actually the structure itself is not. So it's all from close. I, I did wanna address the lighting issue. The reason why we included the lighting is because we know that lighting is, is very much a concern, often not for the most. For our use, it's not a concern. We would be just as happy to have text them and say that you can't have lighting for it to grow. It will significantly limit the type of greenhouses we would be able to put in there. But certainly that can be done. Um, but really the purpose was to try and address that concern, uh, that people might have about light. Because it's, it's, it's a concern if you read things about greenhouses. People do say, you know, they don't like the fact that they have to live at night, especially for certain types of, our type of growing doesn't require that. So, uh, you could, so the text node and say, you know, couldn't mend the text node and saying that there's no, uh, lighting for, for the purpose of growing the, uh, produce. Obviously, like, you know, at four-thirty at night, it gets dark in the winter, lighting for workers, but that, that would, that's a different. Uh, the other thing I did want to address was the, uh, the other, um, there's a very good, very good questions to, as to what about the other buildings that are required to support on the greenhouse? Um, interestingly, the way that, that, um, the reason why we're, right, we have drafted the amendment we did is because everything is contained within the greenhouse. So the offices and what, what they call the head house, and I am talking about something called the head house. The head house is, is the packing, like the vessel. Um, that's all contained in the greenhouse. So it's all window. So I wanted to address those and see if they have any other questions.
Yeah, I have a couple. So I mean, we want to make the application that is to give a bit of, uh, our research back in the ship. It is contained in greenhouse.
So what, what is, I have to go back with my notes. What does it say exactly? Sorry.
Um, I mean, I'm gonna bring up the amendment if I can. I've had it a dozen times. Let's see if I can find it.
We actually harvest and packing, we harvest and packing at the same time. As soon as we can, the head of letters, we pack it.
Okay, so we're harvesting, you're packing, three rounds.
Yes.
And then it's taken off-site.
We talked about the bunch of customers that we have. We would get the products always to New York or Montreal, whatever it's spent. What they do is this process is kind of the wash of the box. When we harvest, we take in the head out of there. That can clear the first piece, we take it in the tent and it goes to the box. No processing plants or anything like that in there, in the head house.
So I'm trying to picture this, not considering this, I'm looking at it whole section. Um, and the P O Ds on, as far as I can, I'm not, I started Mr. Dobson's property, it was all the way to Maryland, I'm not. So we are considering hundreds of acres, so I'm trying to think about how to make this, uh, work. Not doing an entire pair of, uh, two acres, I'm kind of. So, so if you look at, have you built any, a little, a little on the side? It talks about next, maybe you announce that with one story, not sixteen thirty feet, except that accessories required. Operating greenhouse may be directed to the reasonable and necessary height that not created in the sense here, but they do it fine.
Right.
That, that we're, that we're talking about with the accessory.
I'm tired. Hi. Yeah, I was gonna say, so I'm sharing the one I renumbered his to go with, um, with our regulations. Let me see if I can share, please.
You can, alright. Second part, you can believe the accessory part.
Necessary dwellings. You, you said dwellings, so I just wanna clarify, you didn't mean dwellings, correct? Such as structures. No, I just wanted, because dwellings aren't allowed in that, so I wanted to make sure I got that clear for everyone.
I am saying the return of the name, I think you have a feeling. I do have the other one question, which is what are, as I said, it's ours. Like I said, my time for, we definitely are. There's a lot of work around the block, there should be going on around the block.
Well, I'll worry and sabotage it by one.
You don't want to mingle with a site.
I appreciate that, but I, we do wanna answer any questions that might happen at the same time, so we don't wanna.
You can harvest the sign like after ten o'clock, it's too hot. So you harvest very early in the morning, the rest of the day. I would say for a site like that, fifteen to twenty. Where, where we at right now, we're a little bit less than that. This is gonna be a lot larger, but the technology within, because we're dealing with the existing structure that we work. You could not remain apart of technology and optimization that you can do as a tiny facility.
Yeah.
So we save a lot of, a lot of labor that we don't need to, but still we're gonna need it. I would say that's my point.
Is a million gallons of water, pretty enough?
No. Totally, okay.
For where it's much. Talking about, about the, uh, first of the. Time to find a happy medium for both tables. I've been thinking about saying, you know. To find a happy.
That's probably very, probably the, the hardest part of this, kind of the, because you aren't that taking a, arm and. It's ineffective, right? So, so in order to do that, you need to have. Every time, every time you print it, you think about that, right? If you're doing that many heads. Every time you print it, then that, that would direct that not to print out on the other head.
I don't know if this concept to be such to, 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 to the test. However, my part is this, is a compromise for the maximum. And just trying to visualize the area that would be affected by changes. Will there be a way to suggest running to help reduce the visual impact of the greenhouse? When I, when I'm saying, saying, talking about, you know, aqua road, because if I try to think about throwing feet, if there are two feet or three, but yeah, I mean, I say, oh, what is the sun far? If I slow the moon that high, I'm gonna say, what the heck is happening? But so if you put the skill in out there, maybe that's true, or maybe it's gonna be four. Maybe we're just gonna really take off. It's gonna be like a home run through the town. But still, I have to think about which properties that have been, are in general, but are cut through by provisional structures. So how to find a compromise, almost try to hide the building more than the field, sometimes. Maybe burn up by the road and it will kind of rain. The stars are behind. I know that the government back wants to ask this question.
Part of the beauty of that area.
Part of the beauty of that area is.
You would have to come to the microphone, state your. State your name and address where you live.
He brought some twenty fifty three Chamberlain Highway. Uh, South. Part of the beauty of that area is that it's flat. Okay, and I understand what you're saying as far as burmies is concerned. But take a ride down Chamberlain Highway and see where the berm with Pierre's property is. And you'll see a complete disaster. So I personally feel so that's a. It says a landscape buffer in the zoning regulations for agriculture. And that's on one of the other one of those issues that should be addressed someday as far as. Regulations for agriculture because it's. It doesn't work. It's like planting trees under paralines. It doesn't work.
I also know that this is on just trying to figure out.
Thank you.
I just wanna mention one thing that we first went and tried to. Get into the temple and do something. The way to back through and the way. If we exercise.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right.
Yeah, well, I'll answer that partially.
Yes.
Um, that. In creating the regulations as some of the standards, you of course can. Include regulations that address buffering, mounting, you know. Site criteria for the individual sites once. Once they then come in, you put it in the regulation so that then when they come in for a site plan approval. They have to have met those criteria, which is what this is. It's the criteria, the what what is proposed. Are the criteria for someone who is proposing to put a commercial greenhouse over the size of five thousand square feet. On any of the P O D properties. To answer a little more specifically, in the proposal. The last criteria is the forty foot landscape buffer shall be provided around the entire perimeter. Except when adjacent lots, which are also zoned P O D or for non residential purposes. In which case the buffer may be reduced to twenty feet. Only access drives landscaping and utilities shall be permitted within this buffer area. So that can be modified. That can be more specific as to what a buffer includes. Perhaps I'm hearing from you screening in that buffer maybe or perhaps screening. And also indicating that directly across the street is not P O D. P O D is only on the east side of the street. So the properties across the street would be an. Adjacent lots, which are residential as opposed to non residential. So they would, the buffer would be to the front of the property as well as. As proposed, because they'd have to provide that forty foot landscape. I I have a question for the applicant because I don't think it was, or rather, I think it came on clear to me. So we have a definition of height in our regulations. And the definition of height is for a building that's a peaked roof building. It's halfway up the peak or half. You measure the height to halfway between the soffit and the ridge. And I'm wondering if the intent is that the ridge be at forty feet, that the. Halfway mark be at forty feet of of the roof line or some other variation of the definition of height. So that it can be clear for the record.
There's already written down thirty feet.
Okay, or thirty, whatever there.
My correction is something. But no, the one I'm saying is we're not dealing forty now. You go over the flat wood, can you say that?
It's flatter than you would think of as a traditional greenhouse.
So. So because I'm the one that has to. Should you move forward, I have to fix the wording. Generally speaking, so the highest point of the roof would be at thirty feet. On and as opposed to the height and only because height is defined. And then would it still have that? Are you proposing to still have that provision for the additional ten feet? For accessories? I was.
I'm curious about the selection of this parcel. And what other parcels? Might fit the criteria that we're looking for in other zones or other areas. I think of this use was similar uses. When I was first reading. The first properties that come to mind for me are the greenhouse establishment that I put up in Cheshire. What used to be the Pascal Owen farm, which is in the area that has become an industrial zone. Yeah, so the. In my mind, it makes sense that 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 an industrial area might be. Perhaps more appropriate. If there were enough acreage. I'm just curious if there's other sites in town that.
Present, well, take a step back. I believe you are correct. I think that's the Wisconsin area off of six ninety. At present, I believe there's one industrial property, one of the. Maybe yes, takes a nine four hundred also in the control area. And that's the only site we have on the size industrial wise.
How about the Ramses property?
Ramses property will also be a fit. It would be. Twenty twenty five acres. Yes, Ramses would also be possible. Pure size perspective, taking out the zoning piece. It's gonna go in triangle would be the size of, but yes, I would say the Ramses piece. Or Meadow and Turnpike and then the natural corner.
I'm bringing up the zoning map if anyone wants to zoom in on that area. I can then share that. That's not a thing. But. And then I have a couple of other comments. One, you're done.
The reason why I put plastic in the amendment is because the current greenhouses are not made of actual glass. You can't, you can't actually make them of glass anymore. The ones that they're currently are glass. Problem is that if the glass falls. So you can't make them like that anymore. I forget, I forget the material that makes them out of today. So there's there's special materials that make it out of. So it's. I think it would be hard to just say glass because it's not really glass.
My immediate reaction to that is perhaps using the word rigid. Next to the plastic, I don't know. That's that's it's a. I don't know. I'm trying to find where that was. Blazed with the predominantly glass, plastic or other translucent material. Perhaps. Glass, plastic or other rigid translucent material or rigid plastic. I don't.
I I have to check, like, don't know. Only since the pathology changes, I don't know. Technical words and technical words and things. I think we're here this time. But that's, I mean, that's. Well, that's that is what we're going to use, right?
That's not right. Nope. How do you spell rigid people? There you go. I had an F D. The another comment, one of the questions raised was with regard to the. The lighting, I believe, and if it's removed, that's. That's one resolution, but it's more to answer the question is that the outdoor lighting where that was in here is quoted. Out of the outdoor lighting from the P O D zone and was inserted, same wording. For other commercial uses in the P O D or dust or other. Yeah. Just use the language. Um. Reiterating, of course, you said the greenhouses would be subject to the site plan approval and the details of the site plan approval process at that time. I'm sorry. I lost this. You you cut so many things off my list. I. That which is great, you guys addressed so many of the items.
Think what they can end with. And what we're looking at now is a whole different. I I don't know what the rest of the commitment is. But maybe to continue and hold this covered view open so that you can kind of adjust solve it. Because what the applicants agreed that adjust to their type original maximum. And so that Maureen knew that trying to put this together is of course the same front as we do now. And and so that if it's something, when we do go to vote on that, we have something concrete as opposed to. Trying to go on the screen now as compared to the follow up.
I do think of my other answer I had with regard to the. The sewer. That is one of the criteria for the P O D zone. Proposals that would be for that in that. Campus type complex that was. Otherwise allowed in the zone as a special permit use. This would be an agricultural use, not falling under the criteria for that type of the. That's the corporate complex use that's it's under one of those criteria. For sewer and water being.
I also serve in the weapons commission in Brooklyn. For what we do as commissioners. And situation like this is real. While we're working. Back to you that this gentleman were operating just so that you can actually physically see. What the operation is. One of the other things that we have required weapons commissions is stating back the out. It states that this way you can get an idea of what the layout is and setbacks are. Just physically so that you know what your entrance and exit is, et cetera, et cetera. So on and so on. So those are just two suggestions.
I'll add to that, that any if you chose to do a site visit, if more than two of you were at that site visit. We would need to notice that properly and I believe it's two. I'd have to check that, but I think it's two and we'd have to notice that, we'd have to know about it, et cetera. And you couldn't discuss anything about the site or plan with the applicant in the field unless it was so noted. And we had a recording secretary there. Or tape of what happened. Generally speaking, yes.
All right, so yeah, lots of information.
Let's make the motion continue like we can.
Now, this is Maureen speaking. And the hearing was scheduled to begin this evening. You scheduled that at a past meeting and it was noticed and posted for that. However, the mailing was not done in time for the meeting nor the posting of the property. And additionally, we are waiting for their site plan. All from the applicant, so we have discussed that with him. And therefore I suggest that you postpone the public hearing. If the plans are received today, it could pass if they were received by seven or by possibly by tomorrow. It's feasible that we have time to review them from the staff level. For the November fourth meeting, or you can announce to continue it to that and then make the decision at that meeting whether or not it needs to be continued to eleven eighteen. Or you can continue it. No, you have not opened the public hearing yet. So you can postpone it, but to what if you postpone it to a specific day, like to a meeting? Then we don't have to run it again in the paper if you change the date. That's my suggestion, and if it needs to be further posted, but I'm putting that caveat in that may need to be further postponed. Because we did give them a staff deadline of this week to get us the meeting materials we need, the review materials.
Okay, minimal motion, but Mr. Robin, we have second, second by Mr. Bruce for the discussion and all this in favor. Okay, propose amendment to the grounds only regulations. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your patience. I knew you were.
I'm watching.
Sorry, so my cheers on here. So, I'm Kevin Cole, that I'm the property, so the development, property development facility manager for Enterprise Rent Co. So as stated, so proposing the amendment to section 83 S of building zoning regulations. Specific zone, we're talking about is the plan shopping for P S A zones. So, just, I know, I'm running a narrative, and I'll kind of do it through that a little bit, and then add some more comments, different things that I've thought about doing this, and looking at the regulations, et cetera. So, we believe that there's actually some very similar uses already. One being public transportation, including parking stations and shelters, under section B, and then under C, auto rental dealers, including accessories, automobile service, repair. And, well, we're not selling cars, but that use does fall under automobile rental, et cetera, does fall into that particular use of zone, so. So, just to be clear, on, you know, what we're talking about, Enterprise operates auto rental facilities throughout Connecticut. And I think when most people think of those services, they think of what you see at the airport, where you have a multitude of cars and, you know, massive parking lots. And that's true at those particular facilities, and they pull from the surrounding communities, they can pull from multiple towns, et cetera, when people do go to the airport to rent those parts. But we also have a multitude of home city branches, which some of you may have rented from, and maybe have, but in the home city market, where it really focuses on dealing with people from that community, trying to service those communities. So, there are two different models, and one was speaking about specifically in Berlin, where it's more of a home city market, and you're dealing with the surrounding communities from that market, and so it's not, it's not what you see at the airports, et cetera. So, just to clarify that. Okay, so I guess enough on that. Some of you may have seen that this ran, this proposal was ran through the Capitol even council of governments fraud. And I don't know if you saw the note from them, that they didn't see any context. Regional plans or policies concerning neighborhood towns, meaning that this falls in line with a lot of the surrounding towns in terms of what's allowed in similar communities and certain areas, they already allow this type of use, and it's in sync with that, I guess. There was one comment, which I'd like to address, but I'm not sure I understand it, from the zoning officers. Auto rental service and repair can consume large swaths of land. These, these uses should not mix to local shopping uses, but our destinations in and of themselves. I'm not sure that we fall into that, we don't obviously need large swaths of land for this particular business model. And we pull from, we're going to pull from the Berlin community, perhaps a couple of other towns, but we're not pulling from people coming from Waterbury or Haven, we're, you know, it's a regional thing, where we're pulling from local businesses, et cetera.
I was just going to ask a question, I was going to say, so, you're talking about an enterprise rental office, where if I wanted to rent a car, I would go in or leave a reservation online and go in and deal with the agent at the counter, and perhaps the car that I rented would be brought in that day, so I would have it available, but are we storing the cars?
It's a great question, and so, to be clear, I'm using rental because it's most recognizable, but in this particular case, we're actually talking about truck, so, but it's the same type of model, it's the same idea. But to your point, yes, you could, you could book online, you can call the local office, and they'll make the reservation for you. And since the cars are being brought in, we operate in a really high utilization model, so I don't need to have 100 vehicles sitting there to service customers. We, we understand, you know, when you rent a car, you know, there's certain timelines going in and return, and there is a, I guess, a process. We run those models at about 90% utilization, meaning I don't need to store, you know, a bunch of cars there, or a bunch of trucks, to service the community, there's a process to it. And to be honest, the model is set so that we're not making money if they're all sitting, so the goal is for them to always be on, on rent and operating that model, so it works for us from a financial standpoint. So, we don't need a ton of bargains, but we just don't have any, any.
Well, I think that's my concern, because, because automatically, like, the enterprise, I think of an airport, walking down the road, so it's similar to choosing a car. And I've also had the experience of renting a car, where it's like a budget on the going ten块钱. It's a budget basis, so if I rented a car from them, and they maybe, like, they have
Right, and, and. Yeah, it's a similar model, and I would call that a home city model, it's the same thing we're talking about, where you're not going to have this plethora of vehicles at the site.
Especially if you're going to your shopping mall, because now suddenly you see all these perks there, and they think, you know.
So I think a way to run into that, kind of a concern, would be that somewhere, perfection amendment, your model and maximum amount of square footage that would be needed for your distance line.
As far as building or?
Building and the, the lot, the desire. My understanding is, if I'm speaking out of turn, it's just letting out, but, so, if you, if you agree to the change of text amendment, this still has to go before a special, correct, and it's still to go before a special, for a special permit, just like a used car dealer, et cetera. And I'd imagine at that point, you can dictate what, I mean, I guess you could say or dictate whatever you want at that, you know, at that special, because you, you still have to say, us or any other company that comes, because the text amendment is obviously for every other company that comes in, so you still have to say what that is, or what that looks like, I guess, is what I'm driving at there. It is, yes, yeah. Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's pretty accurate, yeah, it's pretty accurate. This particular one. So, the model is, you're talking about pickup trucks, cargo vans, medium duty, and box trucks, that's what we're talking about. And, and I can't, the, when you're looking at the pickups and the cargo, our model is kind of 75% of the small, only the nice in the cargo and the pickups, and then you have a percentage of the box trucks and a percentage of the medium duty, so, you know, there's a mix there. The high percentage that we do is the pickup trucks and the cargo vans, because you know, the smaller vehicles there. And a lot of the, the customers that we deal with are local customers, landscapers, you know, FedEx, UPS, those companies that deal in transportation, that's, that's where our customers are. And whether it's during the peak of a holiday, or whether it's, you know, you get landscapers in the summer, they don't want to add on vehicles, they rent them from us for two and a month, but some of our, you know, our business model. Medium duty, which is 26 foot, so it's a great, yeah.
Yeah, I just haven't talked enough, I just haven't talked enough tonight. Me first, or Chris? Okay, um, so, just again, reiterating that the regs are affected not only by their business model, but in, as you've discussed with other amendments, that it is for any business that falls within that regulation, so, yeah, we have to think broadly about what falls under the rental vehicles, just wanted to call that out, because it's not a specific special permit at this time. The use, the text was taken straight from the BT1 regs for private, you know, as one of the categories being private transportation or auto rental services, and then, or just expanding it from BT1 zone to also being in the P S. The, right, P S A zone.
Yeah, P S A.
P S A, I get those two every time. They, the commission, of course, should consider the purpose of the zone, which I had here, and look the page. So the P S A zone is basically, we're talking the Webster Square Road area, as well as the, again, here I go with my P S A versus P S B. I think it's Chamberlain Highway where the mobile station is, at the intersection with High Road, is also P S A. Those are two P S A. The other, all, the I G A. And Ballab. What's? Yes. Let's get it up there, so, it's this area over here, which, oh, can you even see it? No, I'm not sharing my screen. It is Ocean State Plaza. So this is, this is the main focus, but again, wanted to call to everybody's attention, we have more than one P S A zone, and that is this one, as well as the other, I think that's the only two, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't do anything on site, if that's what you're asking, it would be, find a local business and work with them to service the vehicles, assuming there's one in the area, and I can't speak to that, but we don't do it ourselves.
Another question is, is a DMV license required for this use, and if so, would you have specific regulations with regard to licensing? That has to, according to state statute, has to go to the zoning board of appeals for that as well. Noted, does it need, so you didn't, we saw another one recently that did for the type of leasing, so, that's why I wasn't sure of the differences between them. The physical characteristics to consider that, the expanse or limit of the indoor inventory available, as you've already addressed, would be, or I guess as he responded, would be available to be a site-specific special permit requirement to meet the zone, or the property it belongs, it's being proposed for. As he stated, we got the reply back that there's no conflict with the regional plan, and I also did not find any specific conflict with the P O C D. Oh, and I was just going to quote, the purpose of the P S A district is to accommodate retail and other business uses with a primarily local orientation.
Yes, actually, somebody had mentioned that with the automotive dealership as well as plantation company, they're both there. Others, biggest piece of the business is really going to the Amazon, like, the vehicles. Happen to have Enterprise. Our community, so, front and contract. I'm taking a step ahead, but I'm just saying, to me, to me, it says a lot that they're looking at our community for this.
Anyway, all right, so. And then all those in favor? You were in charge, okay. All right, so that goes on to the old business, we see here, the zoning regulations, which is two houses, so that's going to be okay, and then the next step was the
for the regulation facility management, management, enterprise holdings, to add the text amendment to section 21 A3 S.
And Mr. 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 Motion to approve the text amendment for second.
Second.
All right, yeah.
Maureen asked if she could please add just a couple of items, and I know it's been extremely long night, so I'm going to talk extremely quickly. May I add a couple of things that I would like to ask if I can deal with administratively? The first is, you'll remember that Morland School has, now has the new use of prism autism in a portion of the building, and there's an existing playground behind the building. I don't know if you'll all be able to see this, but it's somewhat in the middle of the green backyard, there's a playground, and they'd like to add a fence to that. Generally speaking, non-residential, it is in a residential zone, but non-residential fences generally come to the commission. It's well within the setbacks, it's not to the property lines, so I'm wondering if I could evaluate that administratively. I hear that is the consensus, so we'll handle that administratively. The other was a request I got this week. You'll recall, you made the approval for 76 Fuller Way, for what had been Premier Limousine, to become Smart Feed. The property, or the name will be interchanged now with Right Feed, as they look nationally throughout what to call themselves for naming. However, they are coming in with a modification. for naming, however, they are coming in with a modification to replace the entire building on the same footprint, but replace the building same door locations, same flow, same site plan, but rather than have two 40-foot bump outs on the roof as proposed to accommodate their equipment, the new building would bring the entire roof up to the 40-feet height, which is within the regulations, on the same foundation, they just are having trouble with their site work for the accommodating the new things, the new equipment and getting that height for the areas they need it. And so therefore, they have provided me with rendering so that you can see it to see if it's something that you'd consider us to do administratively, or if you'd want to see the whole thing as a site plan amendment. Again, no changes to the site, it is a design issue. That zone does not have design standards like the CCD 1 and 2 or the Berlin term. That's okay, how many times have I lost my folder this week? That also can be dealt with administratively, I appreciate that. Chris left, maybe you can remind me, and I'm sorry for this, if it's a repeat, have we discussed signage at the back entrance to the Accura dealership? Did we discuss, okay, I had it, I had it noted as a September thing, it appeared again today. So, the Accura dealership had been closing the back gate, which had been used for, it's part of their overall flow of their facility, you know, of the multi-use project. However, they were having some security issues by that gate being open, so they had been closing it. They are proposing, I said, because it was part of the site plan that they had an entrance out onto Episcopal Road, I was not comfortable with handling it administratively, and that I wanted to bring any new signage or locking of that gate to you guys, so let me just read to you what he said, "Thank you for meeting with me and providing some clarity," and that's about the process, because they did not understand that I wouldn't sign off on it. "After discussion, I think the game plan can entail us attaching signage to the rear gate, stating that it will be open during dealership business hours, and stating those hours on the sign, in big enough thought to make sure people can easily read it as a pass. I would put the sign on both sides of the gate so that people attempting to leave or enter through the area would see the times and the notification, and that way they can close it when the dealership is closed." They had the blocking. We, we had gotten some complaints about it being closed, and I think people were driving through the parking lot and finding it closed and getting, and so we were getting calls that the town manager's office was getting, because it was closed. So, if, if signage hours are appropriate, that's fine. And I hope that's all that was on my desk feed. You've all seen my desk.